Welcome to the Tuesday, July 16th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 5:30 this evening to discuss employment of employee, collective negotiations, property acquisitions/lease/purchase, and the approval of the June 11th closed session minutes. We have seven Board members present, none absent. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is the best part of any Board meeting, and that's the recognition of our outstanding students. Mr. Bloom, or is there someone from the --
Yeah, if I could ask Annette Schulte to come up. And that is the coach at York High School, and she's bringing with her assistant coach. Emma's not here this evening, but we want to go ahead with the recognition of that.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I'm Annette. I am Annette Schulte. I've been Emma's coach the last four years in cross-country and track and field, and this is my assistant, Katie Zavodny, who's been Emma's distance coach this last year in track and field. You'll see, you'll hear that Emma is really an exceptional student. She's all-state, all-academic. Only 25 students in all sports, boys and girls, are selected to this. She sits first chair, symphonic band, so she is an exceptional musician. She's an exceptional athlete, three-time all-state in cross-country, four all-state medals in track and field. But I'm going to spend a minute or two telling you what a truly extraordinary person she is. I think Emma's philosophy is about not wasting and caring. Emma doesn't waste anything. When you coach or you teach, you see so many young people with so many talents that you just want to take them and say, "Don't waste your talents. Don't waste your youth." Emma has not wasted anything. She's gone from, I would say, like a B-plus athlete as a freshman to one of the most exceptional athletes in the country and in the state. She doesn't waste her musical talents. She doesn't waste her academic talents. And she also wants to go into environmental science, so she wants to make the world a better place environmentally. She's a vegetarian. She cares about animals so much that she has, is a pure vegetarian. She cares about her community. She wants to make it better by studying environmental science. She even mows the lawn with a hand-pushed lawnmower, so they, her family doesn't even use a gas lawnmower. She cares about her teammates so much that when she won her first all-state medal, the senior girls who were very close to it but didn't, she wouldn't even put it on in front of them. She'd hide it in her pocket. And this last summer, not this summer, but the summer before, we lost three Division One athletes in cross-country, and there was a big gap between our number-one runner, Emma, and this group of fledgling runners that we had. The pace that they ran was way different, and for them to qualify for state as a team, Emma held back on her pace. She really pulled back on her possibility of improving her own individual performance and challenging for that state championship and paced that group of fledgling girls so that when they got to the state meet, every single one of them had an incredible personal record. So Emma cares about her teammates. She cares about her community. She cares about herself as a person, too. She makes, she sets extraordinary goals. She was a captain her freshman, junior year, and a very shy kind of, you know, "Okay, do you think maybe it'd be time to do strides now?" to her team. And then, as a senior, she came on as a very strong person, and she would say, "Okay, team, let's go. Let's get this done." So I saw her, and Katie saw her, improve as a leader. We saw her set goals. She's very timid, very shy. She does not like the spotlight, but when she gets into a race, she is tenacious. So that's, it's wonderful as a coach. You see a lot of talent, but when you see talent and you see hard work and you see a really caring person who puts her teammates and her community and the people around her first, that's a joy to coach, and that's what makes her extraordinary. So thank you for taking the time to listen to us talk about her.
Thank you. Stay right there. Annette, before you go, Mr. Bloom wants to read a proclamation. Also, Annette, where, what is Emma going to be doing this fall?
Oh, Emma's going to be going to Stanford. We're, in September, she's leaving for Stanford. She'll be running track and cross-country there, and she'll be studying environmental sciences.
Thank you.
And I second that. My daughter had the privilege of running for three years with Emma, and I had the privilege of watching her grow, and she is the epitome of student-athlete and just fantastic example of what we like in District 205. She brings 110 percent to the classroom, to the track, and to everything she does. So once again, I mean, this is, we've been up here a few times with Emma. I'll read this again. It's my privilege. Whereas, on May 18th, 2013, at Eastern Illinois University's O'Brien Stadium in Charleston, Illinois, Emma Fisher, York Community High School, class of 2013, won third in the 3200-meter run with a time of 10:41 and 42 seconds, and sixth in the 1600-meter run with a time of five flat and 45 seconds, 45 hundreds, and also won her third all-state track medal in the Class 3A State Tournament. And whereas Emma is one of only three York graduates to earn all-state honors at one state meet in the distance double, the 3200 and 1600-meter combination. And whereas, in 2012, she was named all-state in track and field, finishing fifth in the 3200-meter run, as well as being honored as a three-time all-state athlete in cross-country, finishing 23rd in 2010, 12th in 2011, and second in 2012. And whereas, Emma currently holds the second fastest all-time performance on the IHSA state meet course for three miles with a time of 16 minutes and 15 seconds, which also ranked her fourth in the nation. And whereas, her athletic, academic, and musical achievements have gained her admission to Stanford University, where she plans to study environmental science and run cross-country, as well as track and field. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community of Elmhurst. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Emma Fisher, her parents, head coach Annette Schulte, and assistant coach Katie Zavodny for these outstanding achievements. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could, I'd just like to, a little off the script, but this evening, in your personnel and the consent agenda, we have the appointment of a new assistant principal at Churchville Middle School. Gina Poe Greeter, as you know, was appointed the principal. Gina's here in the audience, and also the new assistant principal that we're recommending tonight, Peter Cunningham. So Peter, if you could just stand up and Gina and be recognized just so. The Board of Education, Peter, congratulations and welcome pending Board approval to the Elmhurst Community School District. Glad to have you.
Next on our agenda this evening is public comments. First is Alice Redinga.
My name is Alice Redinga, 15W 571 Victory Parkway. I'm a resident of the Conrad Fisher neighborhood. I'm still concerned, I'm still questioning why we're holding students back, only offering bilingual education and not additional options, which programs would continue to keep our school in compliance, such as pull-out, co-taught, or push-in ELL services. We have students at opposite sides. When they take, when they are in the program, they take an access test, which is to exit the program, and you have students that can be scoring as low, it's a 4.8 as a student that would have exited. So you can have students as low as 1.2, barely a newcomer, and students at 4.7 in the same bilingual classroom. And in that case, someone has to be missing out. Either there's too much English for the limited English student, or what I'm afraid is happening is that the student that is ready for that richer and higher level of English vocabulary is being held back. When trying to differentiate in a classroom, research will show that the least restrictive environment is always our preference, allowing students exposure to general education as much as possible while at the same time meeting other needs. So a student who is exiting, or if the district is still somehow thinking that late exit is still successful, a student that is at that end of the spectrum may only need somebody helping them and supporting them with language arts. Writing is the last part to come for most of the students, so maybe someone that's scoring a 4.7 in their cumulative score but is weak in language arts, we can support them through that language arts. It's not that that student is still requiring and being held only in a bilingual classroom. In every other district that I've been in, there are these other services. The districts I've been in have only kindergarten, first, and second grade, and in the other grades, it's an ESL, whether it's a co-taught classroom so that they're in the general lead, and having additional support from an ESL teacher, where some of them are still doing pull-out, but they're receiving the services that they need in the least restricted environment, giving them the opportunity to continually hear more and more rich English vocabulary so that they can pick it up and learn it. I'm certainly not suggesting immersion into English. I'm not suggesting that that would be a benefit. And I'll say this, I teach in a middle school, and having children that have lived through middle school, it's a difficult time. There's sometimes I've got kids that have come into the building where I'm at, and they have been in the district where they have had bilingual all the way through fifth grade, and they come in, and especially some of the boys, they're embarrassed by the books that they have to read. They're, it's hard for them to go into classrooms and, because they know that they're limited in what their proficiency is. I really think that you need to look at all the options, and I think that you need to still go back to and listen to the teachers and Jane Bailey that have been successful at Conrad Fisher, and their input really needs to be driving this more than administration from Ms. Malterity, quite honestly.
Next is Jennifer DeBoscher.
Hi, my name is Jennifer DeBoscher, and I live at 3 North 300 Emroy Avenue in Elmhurst, Illinois. And I first wanted to thank you all for listening to me. I continue to be involved and vested in Conrad Fisher as a parent. I have two kids that did attend Conrad Fisher, and then I have a future Conrad Fisher student in my home. So I'm also a community member and a taxpayer. So I first want to thank you for listening to me and making some appointments. Fisher's an amazing school where children are valued and educated. The kids are excited to learn, and they feel accepted at Conrad Fisher. If we go back to a Psych 101 lesson, Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, in so many levels, the kids' basic needs are met at Conrad Fisher. And I'm talking about maybe food, education, social acceptance, unconditional value. Again, they feel valued at Conrad Fisher, and as a parent, we can tell that. I'm not saying what is best for all kids. I'm saying to the Board and to the administration, please listen to what the parents want, and sometimes a letter will handle that, sometimes a meeting will handle that, sometimes power, a PowerPoint and slides will provide that. Sometimes they won't. It depends on the parent. So I would like all parents of Conrad Fisher kids and all community members to know what's, what their options fully are for their kids. And again, I think the power, the power, the slides can work, but for a lot of parents, it still doesn't do acceptance. It still doesn't do justice to them, and I think they still have questions. So I would ask the Board to please continue to ask questions, whether that be a focus group, whether that's attending the BPAC meetings. I still am not clear why the BPAC meetings were moved from Conrad Fisher to Churchville, but things like that. Look at all the avenues and try to figure out what really is going on and how can all parents best be provided with the most knowledge. We still, of course, have to be compliant, and I want to ask, too, that the administration still follow their vision statement and mission statement, where all kids are accepted and all kids are valued and all, most situations, most decisions are student-centered. Thank you.
I also want to point out, as I do every meeting, that our policy is to not comment on public comments, but we certainly do listen. The next person on the public comment list is Brenda Velasco.
My name is Brenda Velasco, and I live in 3 N 486 Willow. I've been to a few of these meetings concerning about the ELL programs, and I just want to say that I understand where most of the parents' concerns are. I have two children. I own a home in the area, and one of my child is in the bilingual program and one is not. Within the past few weeks, I've had the privilege to actually meet about 50 parents of children that are in the bilingual classes, and I want to say that these parents are as passionate about their children as the rest of us. We all have the same goal, which is our children's educational success, and at the same time, we want our children to retain their native language. On their behalf, I'm here to say that this upcoming school year, the bilingual community will be an active community and will work with the bilingual council, the school, the teachers, the parents, to help our schools in whatever form we can to make our kids successful. There are a few areas that we are meaning, that we, meaning the bilingual community, will also like to see improvements on. First one, communication. You had one parent mention that there's an issue about communication getting to the Elmhurst residents regarding the school issues. And our parents were blindsided, meaning the bilingual parents, as to what decisions were being made at the school level. Not until recently, I've requested the information to be provided in Spanish to be fair to these The second area, quality teachers. If we're going to bring in more bilingual teachers, we're hoping the experience, they are experienced, and the quality of their teaching is excellent. The schools were not in compliance, so these students were obviously not being taught with adequate resources, and now they're being blamed for having low test scores. As parents, we will work with the bilingual teachers to motivate our children to perform well. Another area, transparency, and this is the last area for now, about where ELL resources are being used up. I have previously asked some of the administration about tutoring for the children that are falling behind. Most of the bilingual parents are immigrants, making less money, and unable to afford extra help. So we just want to know if these funds are, if these parents can obtain some other kind of supplemental help, or, like I said, again, like as an example, tutoring. Again, if you, I want to reiterate that we're on the same team. Let's work together, demonstrate to the children that racial integration starts with the parents. Thank you so much for your time.
I know that filling, for first-time Board meeting attendees, that filling out the blue slip may not be obvious. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to be heard that didn't fill out a blue slip? Okay. I just want to make sure we heard everyone. Next on our agenda is superintendent's communications. So Mr. Purno, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Starting off this evening, free of information requests. We had two. One requested the name and dates of the Spring Musical at York, and the other one requested a copy of the district audit. We approved both of those requests and provided that information to the FOIA request. Second item, right from public comment, I just want to update the Board on the English Language Learning Program at Fisher and across the district. Since we had the June 25th meeting and subsequently another meeting with the bilingual families last Thursday, a couple of things we have done. We have been in contact with the Illinois School Board Associate, Illinois School Board and their administrative team to make sure that our interpretation of the law is the correct one as far as bilingual requirements and the educational requirements for those students at Fisher and any bilingual student in the district. So we're in communication with them. We want to make sure that we are not overinterpreting the law, but we also want to make sure we're underinterpreting the law, because again, we do have a legal obligation to comply with the Illinois requirement for bilingual education, and so that is what we want to make sure we are doing. At the same time, we're looking at all of the students with their access scores from this last spring. Some of those students did indeed test out of the program. However, the concern is that they are still below achievement with the rest of the students. And so what we want to make sure is parents whose students have exited the program or have tested out of the program know that they do have an option of pulling the child out of the bilingual program, but they also have an option of keeping the bilingual program going for their child. And so we want to make sure parents understand that, and I think, as one of the speakers said, we want to make sure parents understand all those options so that they know what those are. So we want to be transparent, but a student can have a four-year bilingual program. The state believes that's best practice, and so they want to make sure that parents understand that if a child is below achievement and is exiting the program, they may want the option of keeping the child in the bilingual program for academic support at the same time. That's a parent's choice, and so we're going to be in contact with those parents at Fisher so that they have and understand what that decision is and where it's going. We are also, we have been in discussions with Jane Bailey. We have asked her that, you know, if there's another way that we can comply with the bilingual requirements, and there's another configuration that would work at Fisher, we're open to that. We're certainly not going to dictate how that comes off at Fisher. What we are going to insist on, though, is a couple of things. First of all, it has to comply with the bilingual compliance requirements for the state of Illinois. We also had classroom targets that the district has set up. We don't want to exceed those classroom targets, so we want to make sure those classroom targets is the same as anybody else. We also, there's a problem with adding staff at this point, and so if there is a request for adding additional staff to Fisher beyond what is allocated at this point with bilingual and regular staffing, we would have to discuss that and find out what the need is and what the justification is to staff Fisher differently than the other schools beyond their Title I and Title III funding. And a lot of the extra staff that is at Fisher right now is because of federal and state grants. So there is extra staff there. There is extra classrooms there, but that's because of those grant programs. So if we're going to exceed that, we want to know the reason why and what the rationale is. So we will hopefully have a discussion with Jane in the next couple of days to see what that looks like, if she has any other ideas of how that can go forward. At the same time also, you know, and I said this before, Jane's going to be working with her staff and the new bilingual teachers who are experienced staff to come together and design the program for this coming year in August. So there is a comprehensive program for all students, not, not just bilingual, but every student in that school. We are going to meet their needs, and with that discussion with Jane and her staff, and Jane is more than capable of leading that discussion with her staff of making sure that, you know, there's a best practice going on at Fisher that meets the needs of all those students. So that is where we are at the present time, and we will continue to work through this, make sure that we're designing the best program possible for all the students at Fisher. Any questions from the Board?
Mr. McDonough.
Just a clarification. You said that when parents have the option to keep their kids in or have them leave the bilingual program, is that choice happened despite their having achieved a certain level on the access scores?
Yes. Parents always had the option of, you know, even if they have a low access score and qualify for the bilingual program.
No, I know they can exit, but can they decide to stay even though they've achieved some level on the access score?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay.
You could have a totally English student go into a bilingual classroom. There is nothing that would prevent that.
During the, it became apparent to me that some of the dates, like a lot of things in education, the dates don't mesh so that things were happening and options were not exercised until data was received, and that didn't happen until later on, until a certain amount of the school year had passed. I'm wondering, is there a way to make the parent choice occur before the beginning of structuring the program so that it can fit better and it can make people feel like they're really in control? I think the goal, at least for me as a Board member, is to support the parent being in control of the program the kid has, and I'm not sure anyone can have a complaint with that.
No, I agree, and I think there's things we can do to speed that up so that we're not contacting parents this late, before the start of the school year. So that's something that we can certainly do next year.
Thank you.
Margaret.
Again, thank you for the explanation and all the, and for all the steps that have been taken thus far. And my question goes along with some of the members who have talked about communication. And I am wondering, is there a way that we can get all the groups together talking instead of having separate plans developed? Is there a way that those groups can meet together and develop one plan?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure there's a plan, Margaret. I think if it's about communication, what the options are for parents, I'm certainly sure that's possible. But again, part of the plan is controlled by the state of Illinois and the requirements of bilinguals. So I don't want to give the impression that we have total decision-making process of deciding a program that doesn't meet the requirements of the state of Illinois. And again, we've been in touch with the Illinois School Board to make sure we're following the spirit and the guidelines of the law. But certainly, we could have meetings, parent meetings, to clarify what are the options? What options do you have for your particular child? What are the pros? What are the cons? And have parents make that intelligence decision. And so, especially right now with the students who, we are planning on doing that with the students that have gone beyond the access of the present access score, to let them know there is an option to keep them in the program or not for a third or fourth year. The other interesting thing, though, is that access score as a cutoff, the state of Illinois has raised that next year. So students who would exit the program this year under a certain score will probably not be eligible to exit the program next year. So I think the state of Illinois is clearly saying that students should be staying in the bilingual program longer than they presently are to attain solid bilingual skills before they exit the program without that support. So that seems to be the direction overall.
And I appreciate that additional explanation and that correction. I certainly didn't mean to suggest that a plan could be made that was outside of what compliance. My, instead, what my thought, my request is, a big piece of this talks about communication, and I've heard communication continually mentioned from all, all perspectives. So again, what I'm asking, I know there's challenges, but how can we work to make sure that administration, the Fisher staff, and the parents are all talking together instead of having separate conversations and then coming back and having disparages in those different perspectives? Again, easier said than done, but what can we do to make that, put that into place?
Well, again, I would, I would depend on Jane Bailey. She's the principal of that building. I think we would depend on her to say, what is the best avenue to get that accomplished? How might we do that? With administrative support, how could we do that? I think the initial, you know, the initial meeting on June 25th was at the request of the parents, and the parents wanted Board members attending the meeting. So that was a meeting that, that was at parent request. We can certainly have, you know, I can talk to Jane, figure out how we could have another meeting that involves all those people to come together, but, but she knows her community best. I don't assume to know the Fisher community as well as Jane does.
Great. And that's what, I mean, I think that's exactly what we're asking, is that all parties be involved in the conversations and early on in the planning.
Thanks for the ELL update. I had one, one other comment that I've heard is about the identification process. Is there something we can do so parents know, have more information maybe about identifying if, or knowing if their child will take the access test? I think it's that upfront ID process where I'm hearing some comments. I think it's that upfront ID process where I'm hearing some comments about that.
We do, I reviewed that. We do have a pretty good explanation, and I'll send that to the board. But there is an explanation that we send out before, when we send that. And it explains exactly why we're asking the questions we are doing. Now, you have to be careful that you explain it and not appear to dissuade people not to fill out that form, because there's been some court cases in which districts have been viewed as trying to discourage parents from filling out that form in the correct manner. So it's okay to explain it, but if you start leading the parents into an answer you're looking for, that's a problem. So we, the present language that we have presently does have an explanation. I will send that to the Board of Education tomorrow. You can look at it. But if we're going to change that, I would want legal to look at that to make sure we're still in compliance. So, but to me, when I read it and reviewed it, I think it's a pretty good explanation of why we're asking if there's a, if English is a second language in the home and what that will lead to and what the consequences are, so.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Second item that's related, school choice, a different item. Last week, or the week before, I'm sorry, the week before, I met with Jefferson parents on school of choice. As you know, it appears that Jefferson is the one school in Elmhurst that will make AYP this coming year. Fisher, despite a lot of great efforts from the staff and that, is just caught in one of those, to me and this editorial comment, bad legislation on No Child Left Behind, because 92%, to consider a building not successful at a 92% proficiency rate, does not make any sense personally to me. But that's the definition that we're dealing with. So as a result, as you know, we have to offer school of choice, school choice to Fisher parents, to Jefferson, the way it appears right now. I explain that to the Jefferson parents. I explain what the capacity we believe of the school is at Jefferson. We still are working at what that capacity level really is. There is two empty classrooms at Jefferson posted on facilities. At a glance, you will see that it appears to be 82 students would be an additional possibility at Jefferson. I also am saying that we're not going to disrupt any programs at Jefferson to necessarily accommodate more students. So for example, the question was, would we put art and music on a cart at Jefferson to free up classroom space? My position would be no, we're not going to do that, because now we're putting a Jefferson program in deficit compared to the other programs in the other elementary schools in the district. So we want to keep the program equal across the board, but then offer as many states as we can at Fisher for those parents that want school of choice. So we are still working with Linda on the capacity issue. We have submitted the letter, as I stated, the letter that we detail all of this to the Fisher parents has to be approved by the Illinois Board of Education. They have not approved that letter yet, nor have the official test results been officially released yet. That will not happen until July 22nd is the latest date from the state of Illinois to release that. So we are virtually in a holding pattern right now until we have the release of those scores so that we know, is Jefferson making AYP? Is any other building making AYP? And then moving forward, and then we have to wait for approval from the state. The other thing that's been talked about, I know a lot, is the waiver from the federal government on the AYP and Race to the Top and No Child Left Behind. The state of Illinois did resubmit a request for a waiver last week to the Department of Education. We have not heard the status of that as of today. So, you know, being, hoping the glass is half full, quite frankly, we are hoping that Illinois, we will finally get a waiver, one of seven states that have not received a waiver. We're hoping that that is reconsidered with a new application, and we would get word fairly soon before we go through all this planning for school of choice. So obviously, we will keep all the parents at both schools updated, the Board of Education, as soon as we have further information, but that's kind of the status of where we are right now. So again, any questions from the board?
John.
Just want to say, I'm very sympathetic for the way some of these irrationally run mandates and faulty attempts at accountability are making it difficult. When do you expect to know how many kids would be moving over? Maybe you can just share with us some of the logistical problems when you don't know who's going where until late in the game.
Well, you know, we have school starting, coming up fairly soon. We cannot do anything until we get the okay from the state of Illinois to send that letter out. Once we send the letter out or notification, we have to give parents 30 days to make that decision on school of choice. We may very well be after the start of school, and that clock would still be ticking. At that point, we would, again, have to look logistically. How can we provide that, the transportation? How much transportation would we have to provide? What are the logistics for moving the kids to Jefferson? How late in the game? You know, we would have to do that even late in the game. So we would have to be on standby with hiring staff. We would have to have everything ready to go so that when we know that I have, you know, 60 students who want to be school of choice and go to Jefferson, that I have the capacity, the staff, the classroom space, the materials in place in order to accommodate them. And so we are making plans right now, when we're going through hiring, in a hiring pool, we're telling Linda, you know, let's be looking at who's available. Who do we know that has already been, for example, an educational aide who is certified that we know is a great candidate for a teaching position? Do we want to keep those on standby? You know, we're looking at the classroom space right now. We're looking at desks. We're looking at, what do we have to have to provide that space? So it's going to be an ongoing process, but I think logistically, we may very well be after the school year before final decisions made.
Just a follow-up on that. Is it possible that if enough students choose, or their families choose to relocate them, it would involve a reshuffling of staff between the two schools? Or is it more likely that it's just simply going to be the addition of more staff and just more money out of the budget?
I think it depends how the numbers go. You know, if you have, you know, if it's spread across the grade levels, let's say at Fisher, and you had 50 or 60 students leave, where do those numbers fall grade level-wise? If it was at one grade level and you had 30, 25, 30 students leave one grade level, it could affect the staffing at that point, because you don't need three staff members at that point, or two staff members, whatever the grade level is. If it's equalized across the grade level, you may not. You may have to add staff at Jefferson and simply maintain the numbers at Fisher. Again, we won't know that until we actually see the requests and where the grade level requests are in the students.
And all this is done under the guise of accountability? It just, I think people need to let their legislators know that ridiculous mandates from above do this sort of things to local control, and they do this sort of things to an orderly operation of school district.
You know, I have to say, I think, and again, editorial comment, but I think I have and my staff have absolutely no problem being accountable. But we are accountable to this community first. And unfortunately, I think the accountability of the community is now becoming second and then sometimes third on the list of accountability. It's accountability now to the federal government, to the state government, and local communities and local control and local decision-making is being taken out of our hands more and more. And I don't think that was ever the intent of public education in this country. And yet, that seems to be the trend. And I know it's in the cry for accountability and student success. I am all for that, and we absolutely should be held accountable. And if we're not preparing students for college-ready, career-ready, then we should be held accountable, and there should be changes made if we're not making that progress. But this is a great example of indications from not only ISAT and from not only PLAN and not only ACT. We are a successful district. Our schools are successful, and students are improving their academic achievement. And yet, in this case, we have a student that's called a failure. Others, now, all my schools except for one is going to be called a quote "failure." And I just don't believe that's an honest assessment of accountability, so.
Anna.
Last month, we talked about the number of states that have gotten waivers. And, well, now, the 43 states out of 50 have gotten waivers from the Department of Education. So there's seven left, Illinois being one. And last month, our state superintendent was quiet on the matter when asked, why isn't Illinois getting a waiver? So since he filed last Wednesday, is he still quiet on the matter? Or is he giving some kind of explanation on why Illinois is being penalized?
You know, I have not seen a communication from the state superintendent. I usually get one probably by tomorrow, is usually every two weeks. So I can report back if there's anything in his, you know, bi-monthly communication about this. But I have not heard anything as of today.
Anything else?
I think I can just make one comment. By any rational assessment, I think any rational person would look at Conrad Fisher's track record and declare it one of the most successful schools in our school district, not the least successful.
So, next Superintendent Purnow.
Yeah, we'd like to turn and look at goal-setting for the district and for the Board of Education this evening. And in your packet, we included the key district performance indicators that were established last year by the Board of Education, and the specific areas that were targeted as improvement areas that the Board of Education, why the administration has started addressing for overall improvement of the district. So I'd ask the board members to look at that document, and we can have a discussion. If you remember, the ones highlighted in yellow are the ones that specifically that the school board asked that we look at as part of the goals for the coming school year. Saying that those are the goals, those are the ones that we're going to emphasize. However, all of the key DPIs are important to us, and we want to see improvement in all areas of the key DPIs, especially if they're short of the benchmark targets. However, the board wanted a special emphasis on the highlighted goals for those DPIs so that we were paying particular emphasis to that. So tonight, what I'd like the board to do is to have a discussion about how viable are those still? Has the Board of Education changed in that goal-setting? And this will drive the rest of the district, because what we want is once these goals are established, we will continue to work with the schools and staff to address the issues that are highlighted in that performance indicator across the district. And again, relevant to the discussion here tonight about English language learners, one of the highlighted goals for the Board of Education this past year was to reduce the achievement gap for two specific subgroups in our population of students, special education and ELL. And so, again, the administration has been working and looking at, what can we do to improve those two areas, because there's a significant achievement gap in those two subgroups of students. We also want to look overall at academic performance as measured by the ACT, as measured by our trajectory of MAP testing across the district. And so those are what we've addressed this year. Under academics, just to remind the Board of Education, we will not have the test results to give you until October. So right now, we don't have updated test results, but that is because we don't have the test results totally back yet, and we just talked about that official notification will be coming, but we don't have it right now. So at this point, I would ask, kind of ask the board to look at our goal-setting from this past year and have a discussion about whether those are still relevant, meaningful for the Board of Education. Are there any you want to take off? Are there any others you want to highlight as a new goal for the coming year?
Emily? Go ahead.
I just had a quick question that might be easy to answer. I was looking at the advanced placement. Why was there no number in the 16-17 target?
We probably need to have that discussion. The board did not set a benchmark target for that one, yet.
Okay. So it just hasn't been decided yet?
Yeah, it has not been decided yet.
Dr. Johns isn't here to respond, but the fact that the E-Pass growth has already reached its 16-17 target shows that he's right on target for his wild prediction of a 13, number 13 in growth. I say that, I mean, I know what a wonderful accomplishment that would be, but I think it's good to have, good dreams. Maybe in this, there's some room, maybe you could explain first, and he's not here to explain it, but maybe you can explain it, that our idea was to not necessarily look at the average, but look where the middle, what was it, the middle 80%? I mean, we were judging it that way? Or no, it was 80% achieving a certain level. We did that with college and career readiness through the ACT. But is there a similar approach that can be taken with E-Pass growth?
Really, we don't think there's a similar approach to take with E-Pass. And so we have kind of made the decision, and if you remember this discussion last year, John, we kind of decided to emphasize E-Pass and start looking at MAP, and that's the trajectory you're talking about, which is, we wanted 80% of our students over the 65th percentile on the MAP testing overall. So that's on the bottom of the academics performance indicator. And so, and right now, we're not achieving that. And as you see, when you look, for example, at elementary reading, 41% of our students are above the 65th percentile. We want that to go up to 80%. So that's a very aggressive increase overall. But again, when Charles and Charles, and Charles is in the audience, and he can explain this better, but when they did the trajectory, we believe that students who are accomplishing above the 65th percentile on the national standardized MAP testing are likely to have success on the ACT and success in college. So we want to push as many students over the 65th percentile as we possibly can. The 50th percentile, just to remember, on a standardized test means 50% of the students nationwide had a higher score, 50% of the students had a lower score. So most districts would look at, how many students are above the 50th percentile? We're saying that is not a good indicator, and it has to be, how many students are above the 65th percentile?
So you're suggesting that we'll change E-Pass growth to white? Or we should change E-Pass growth to white and change students meeting typical growth as become yellow? Is that, the yellow ones are our key, or our core, what was the proper way of saying it, that we're the ones who are looking closest to?
The goal-setting key DPIs? No, I think that the students on track for college and career readiness is still an appropriate indicator. And so again, it would be pushing up, how many students can we get above the 65th percentile? And the benchmark is an increase by 15% by 16-17. I think that's still an appropriate goal.
On the sheet, though, I mean, the yellow ones are the key ones that we're focusing?
Those are the goal-setting ones, yes.
Right. So the students meeting typical growth, which, oh, I'm sorry, it's the one above?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see, so, okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions related to that as well? First, correct my understanding that I thought we were going to move to a goal that 80% of our students achieved a score of 24 or above on the ACT as a goal some point in the future? That may not be a 16-17 target, but it may be beyond that. Is that the case or not?
I don't, you know, that's probably a question for Charles. I don't remember that discussion, quite frankly. Charles Brandell, do you remember?
Is that the case or not?
I don't, you know, that's probably a question for Charles. I don't remember that discussion, quite frankly. Charles Brandell, do you remember?
Yeah, I think you, sorry, my answer...
Please.
Actually, or you can step up here.
Yeah, you should probably step up.
That way, the, the TV, the TV can record, otherwise you're just a voice in the wilderness.
Oh yeah, I don't know, I can move my hands. I, I think you've encapsulated it pretty well, that the long-term goal was 80% of our students above a 24 and kind of a part of that discussion was pushing 80% above that level rather than just looking at averages. But that was a longer-term goal than the 16-17. That wasn't seen as something based on where we were two years ago that was achievable in that timeframe.
Okay, all right. And that's, and that's my perception as well, but if you could just stay where you are because this is a multi-part question. And our 16-17 target is, is an average of 25 on the ACT, but if we keep our E-Pass growth score at, at that seven level where it is presently, it seems like what we're relying upon to move up our ACT score is exactly what we were just talking about in MAP testing and that 65% goal. Because what we would, to achieve this without raising the E-Pass growth goal, what we'd have to have is higher explore scores. And then if you have higher explore scores, you keep a, a seven in the E-Pass growth, then you can move your ACT score up. So I guess my, the finale to my question is, would it be appropriate to bump up that E-Pass growth score by a half a point?
And I think part of, you know, last year, we hit the seven, which was the, the five-year goal. And that was a pretty big bump up from the year before. And if I remember this discussion correctly, the idea was we wanted to wait another year to see where that fell out, whether that was a one-time blip or whether we actually were seeing a trend over time that we were going to be able to maintain that and that this fall would be an appropriate time to reevaluate if we're still hitting that seven or even moving beyond that, that we'd want to reevaluate what that five-year goal was.
And when, when will we know what, what this past year's score was? When will we have that calculated?
We will have it within the next month.
Okay, so we can discuss it this fall?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would, that would really be part of the discussion. When we present the achievement scores, then that would lead to that discussion on, you know, so you'll have a second year of data. I should also say, Board of Education members, that we are going to keep track as we gain the data. We'll keep adding columns so you can see where we've been and where we're going. So you'll have 11-12, but we'll keep that and we'll put in 12, 12-13, and as we move, we'll keep adding that so you can see historically where we've been.
So I'm going to ask the administration to bring this chart back this fall when we discuss and, and figure out what's appropriate at that time and maybe reconsider these or say, no, we're, we're right on target for what our goals should be in this section of the district goals.
Anything else on academic achievement, before we move on?
Now, do we, do we want Charles to keep standing there?
Charles, keep standing there.
Margaret?
Yes, and this goes on to the achievement gap, and I was just looking at some of the major gaps here. And I just wanted to say that it's noted that the gap for the African-American students is, is significant. I believe if overall, if I was going to average, it might be one of the highest gaps that are on our chart. So just focus on that area as we're going to improve our achievement gap.
Mr. McDonough?
I have a question. How do we address, how do you address the African-American achievement gap, which seems to be growing? And ELL growing and special ed growing? Aren't those the three that are growing?
Free and reduced lunch also, right?
Yeah, and, and both, all of those, I don't know if I would characterize all of them as, as growing in a trend over time. And I think some of them, in, in some areas, we're actually seeing them starting to...
Decline.
Compact and, and become smaller. You know, and especially the, I'll address the African-American gap. You know, I know Diana has done quite a bit of work at the high school with the African-American students there and, and looking at ways to address their needs. The high school is probably an easier place to address that. One of, one of the issues and one of the shortcomings of No Child Left Behind and how they identify subgroups is we don't have African-American subgroups in our other buildings because there aren't enough African-American students to reach the threshold for NCLB. It's not until they all come together at the high school that we see that actually identified as a subgroup. So that's another one of the complicating factors.
As far as, as far as ELL and special education, the two targeted areas, because of the large number of, of students in those groups, we have worked administrative team-wise all year to talk about how we might improve those. Part of it is the discussion tonight with the ELL program and what are we going to do to change the program because it looks like the achievement gaps are continuing to remain achievement gaps and that we're not decreasing significantly. Same thing with special ed population. We have had discussions, Meg has led the discussions with the administrative team, with the principals, to look at our present practice and to start talking about, why aren't, why aren't students achieving as the other students are doing? What are we doing that's, that is not being successful and how might we go about changing that? So that's been an ongoing discussion this full year with Dr. Johns leading it, with Meg Schnorr, and, and with other administrators. So we have sat in subgroups and talked about that. This year will be the coming year where we'll look at strategies to say, what strategies are we going to put in place? What changes are we going to make in those programs to see if they're going to be successful in, in decreasing that achievement gap? That was the goal the, the board gave us last year and we've tried to address that this year by looking at, what we don't want to do is jump to conclusions again and say, oh, we know the answer to this and now we invested resources, dollars, whatever it is. We want to look at best practice and say, what is the research saying about best practice? How do you decrease these achievement gaps? What does best practice say overall that will make a difference with these subpopulations? And so we, we've been looking at that, we've been looking at our populations, and individual principals have taken upon themselves, not only in our district discussions, but then going back to their staffs and having similar discussions at their building levels about those achievement gaps.
Chris?
I'd just like to build on that without saying this wrong. You know, I, I believe we have to look at these, these subgroups, the last states that we have to, and it's important that we do. But the question is, in my mind is, it doesn't matter what color your skin is or what your income level is. Our question is, where did you start when you came to us and how much growth do we add to you while you were here? So because you're an ELL student, doesn't mean that you're, you're not smart. And I fear that, we say that if you're an African-American, you're in one of these subgroups, it doesn't get it or isn't, is lagging. But if you're a smart African-American kid, what do you think? Oh, you're an African-American. You're not, you know, you're in that group. How do we focus on kids and where they are when we get them and how much growth that we add to them when they're here, regardless of, you know, income level or color of skin? And so, you know, I get to, how do we look at, you know, whether it's, you know, by decile when you come in? We talked about E-Pass maybe not being the right, the right measure, but I mean, growth in MAP scores. I mean, how do we, for every kid, regardless of skin color, regardless of income level, how do we, you know, focus on adding value to all of those kids? So at the bottom of our page here, we have cutouts based on federal law, but should we not have cutouts based upon where our kids fall when we get them? And so that's an overarching question that I just have, and I don't know whether you guys, you know, kind of below this or straight, we have 8,000 kids in this district. We, at a board level, are looking at an average of 8,000 kids. Should we be looking at elementary level, middle school level, high school level growth? You know, how should we be, because really, what is our role as a board? I, I mean, number one, establishing priorities by saying we care about this kind of stuff? But two, it's allocating resources against areas that need help. This doesn't help us figure out where to allocate resources in its entirety. It gives us some hints, but how do we have this discussion? I know you guys are working on it, but how do we have this discussion on an ongoing basis around when we put our budget together? Do we need help in certain areas within middle school, literacy? Do we need, I mean, pick out those areas? Where are those indicators or how do, I mean, this is a great start and we did it, you know, we took a year to start to get something, you know, a stake in the ground. How do we then build on this to help us as a board allocate resources to areas where we believe we need help to achieve that overarching goal that we have of helping all kids at all levels? So I don't know if you, yeah, that's a nice, real long thing to throw on your lap, Charles, but...
I'm really glad Charles remained standing there.
And, and maybe, let me say this too, I think in performance management, we had a discussion about how these are going to, we do need, I think last year, we rolled these up from the committee level and we need to, at the committee level, kind of look at these and come back. So, so this may be a little bit more rhetorical than anything else, but to set the stage for that discussion, but I mean, if there's anything you want to add?
Well, maybe I can take a stab at it and then if Dave wants to follow up, he can. Yeah, I, I think part of the intent...
Charles will not be coming to another board meeting.
You know, the intent of the, the KPIs really was to provide that high-level measures of the health and growth of the district. It was never intended to give you diagnostic measures to actually drill down. You know, we have several layers of measures underneath those KPIs that we look at and that drive budgetary requests and those kinds of things that come to you. You know, I, I don't, I don't know if as a board, you want that level of depth or have the time for that level of depth. I, I think that's what the, the people that work here are for.
But if you're asking us...
And I'm not saying that you shouldn't have it, but that, and that's part of why, when, when we bring the, the data presentation in September where we kind of wrap all this up, you know, we give you the KPIs, but we also give you several layers under that. And we do break it out by high school and middle school and elementary. You know, we break it out into finer detail so you get a look at what those things are to help you understand why certain things are, are coming your way. You will get a lot more information than just the bare numbers for those KPIs.
Sure, and again, this may be a discussion as we get to that too, but I would ask that we, we do put the budget lens over the top of it. We speak with our checkbook. I mean, we can say we care about something all we want, but if we don't fund it, it won't happen. So, you know, I think we have to look at where you guys see gaps and issues. Help us see what you see. Help us allocate and align resources with where the, where the need is. So that's just, as we continue this journey to more of an accountability metrics-based kind of culture, that, that would be my request as we go forward and as we get into committees and start talking about these.
Well, and one of the things I said, you know, we've met all year on two subgroups, ELL and special education. Developing the strategic plans is the next step and those are going to be requests for, for resources. So what you're asking for is coming. Now, how we're going to fund it is a whole nother question, but that's the next step. What is it we're going to change? What is it that we need additional resources? Not that additional resources are always the answer. We may have to realign resources of things we are presently doing to doing something different because, you know, the measure of insanity is continuing to do the same thing over and over again. So we don't want to repeat that. At the same time, though, to go to staff and say, you know, and I believe staff has the answers to this. I think if we present these problems to the staff and say, what do you think? How do you think we can resolve this issue? Those people have the answer. How can we make sure we listen to those, make that part of the strategic planning processes, then bring that back to the board and say, here's where we'd like to go on this particular issue or this particular, particular gap in our achievement or this particular lack of success or growth in this particular area, here's how we may address it. We don't have that yet for the board, but it will be coming and that's part of the process this year.
Karen?
First off, I'm going to follow up with this and then I'll address my questions, if that's okay. If you want to move on to somebody else and come back to me, that's okay. I guess the point is, is I, in my experience about looking at metrics and data, and especially if you have a large pool, right, in, in the data, is that you can, the average basically, if we're looking at here, the top or the bottom can make a difference. So to Mr. Bloom's point, I, as long as you are at some point in the district looking at, once again, Mr. Bloom's point is deciles, but you know what, and I'm going to throw out numbers and I don't mean it literally, but like the 5-10%, the bottom, you know, 5-10%, 10%, and you've got this huge 80% gap too, that you should segment too, because if we say, stay true to our mission and our value and be for all students at all levels and have growth for all students, right? You have to kind of look at the data more than just at total. And I understand you're doing that for the board level, as long as we're doing it district level and that's how we're implementing plans instead of, looking at it two ways. One is the highlighted groups that we have, but also saying all students. Because maybe, you know, there's a group of students that need the same type of help, but they're categorized differently than we've highlighted them based on mandates at the federal and state level. And that's the caution that we would like to make sure, that's our concern. Okay?
And if I can reassure you, we are, we, we break this down 100 different ways.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we look at growth at each grade level for every 10-point spread on MAP and how, how is this, kids in this 10-point band growing compared to kids in this 10-point band and how are each of those 10-point bands growing compared to what national growth is? So believe me, there are a lot of layers underneath this where, where we are looking at things in a much finer detail.
And based on that data, looking at that, once again, continuous improvement, the root causes and then programs that we need to, in, you know, help those students, resources, whatever happens to be, once again, to get to Mr. Bloom's point, is so that our financial decisions are in alignment and we know why and we can look at the data and say, was that program successful? Did we achieve the growth or do we need to tweak it?
Right.
Et cetera. Okay. Well, that kind of covered a lot of my stuff.
Margaret?
Just one, one more point, and I think we've gotten here. And absolutely, our goal here is to focus on all, all children, all students. And I think one of the points that we were trying to make here is that these subgroups can sometimes, can, well, they can assist us, they can also divert us from the idea of all, what can we do to help all students succeed? And it was very helpful, it was very good to have this discussion so we could hear that it is not just about the subgroups. It is a variety of different ways that we are cutting this data and that our goal is to maybe get some strategies that worked well in these subgroups and apply it to our general population to improve everyone's role. And I think that was the key piece that I just wanted to be sure was, was reiterated, that it's not just about the subgroups, it's about the entire population.
Just, just following off on Margaret, and I think Chris said that too. The challenge for us also, especially with students at risk, no matter what the subcategory is, is that you have students entering the system that are already behind. The challenge for us is we can say, hey, we got one year's growth every year of those kids moving forward. And guess what? They get to high school, they're still behind. So the challenge for that, for the district, is to take those students and achieve more than one year's growth. Otherwise, we're not going to change anything. We're going to still have students who will be significantly behind when they get to high school. So that's a challenge for any educational system, is to take the kids where they're coming in and say, we need to make them successful so that by the time they're at high school, they're not at a disadvantage because they were at a disadvantage when they entered the system. And it's real easy to, to, you know, kind of write those kids off and say, well, we did a great job, they got one year's growth. The obligation for us, quite frankly, is to make every child successful. That's in our mission, that's what we're trying to accomplish. And that means we're going to try to get them to their greatest potential as quickly as we can. And that's a challenge because we're, we have to work beyond one year's growth. So again, strategically, how do we do that? What kind of programs do we put in? What kind of support services do we put in for all students that guarantees at least one year's growth and for some students, maybe a year and a half? Maybe a year and three-quarters every year because one year isn't going to cut it for those kids.
Karen?
Just to add to that, that... Just to add to that, that's why we're not just looking at growth, right? That's why we're looking at a lot of different data elements and you have to look at it holistically and all of the pieces so that you make sure that our programs are really what we're trying to achieve. They're measuring what we're trying to achieve, not just one element, which is growth over the target or their potential.
David Smith, is it technologically possible to put up the attachments that we're looking at on board docs on the screen up there so the whole audience can look at what we're looking at? Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions about student academic achievement?
One more piece, and this may happen when you're talking in committee, Nancy and I, but most of the stuff we measure is, is what happens to our kids while they're with us. But the true measure of success, as Dave said, is college and career readiness. And I know that we've got some stuff that we want to start trying to look at, but kind of measuring success rate after they leave us, how well did we do? And that's kind of tough to get, I know, but I just want to throw that out there as something we don't lose sight of, is we really, if we want to really measure, like Dave said, what we're trying to do is make them successful. So how do we define that and how do we start thinking about measuring that kind of thing? So I just like to throw that out there to make sure we don't lose track of it.
And, and Charles ran into this year, we had a report on how successful our students are at the college level from a variety of colleges that we kind of ran into this year. And I forget the name of the report, but we're going to start looking at that more and more because it was pretty good data on how at least a group of students from Elmhurst were doing compared to national comparisons on two years, four years out of college, that kind of thing. So again, with some of that data that you're talking about. What we're lacking is, you know, not all students go to college, not all students finish a four-year degree. What happens to those students? Are they successful? Where are they going? How did we assist them in making those career choices that really make them productive citizens in the long term? So that's the other piece of data we're, we still try to look at. It's hard to get, but.
That was the National Clearinghouse data that you're talking about? And we do need to revisit that. It was probably four to six months ago. And it's very good data because it shows kids that have gone to two-year colleges, four-year, and then there's another piece of data, how many kids have graduated within six years from high school graduation? So it allows for some of those kids that, you know, maybe they take a little longer, they've made different decisions and we will revisit that again in the fall. And, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and I saw that. I mean, I was liaising at York last year and I sat down with Amy Thompson and I saw that stack and it was fantastic data, she didn't have the time to really go through it. And one of the follow-ups would be a survey, you know, to some of these folks to figure out why it's happening there. And I think she had said it was kind of like 85% of our kids that go to college are covered by this clearinghouse. So there's obviously gaps that we have to fill in, but that gets back to my other point though, which was if this is important to us, how do we provide the resources to track it and to make sure that we're making progress towards it? And that's a discussion that we should have at this board table. If we care about that, then how do we make sure that we put the resources against it, given our budget limitations? But, I mean, it's a priorities discussion, but that's what we should be having here at this table.
I mean, just to point out, the exciting part of this is we're becoming more and more data-driven and making decisions based on data that we've never had before. And so, you know, while I think there's, you know, I get frustrated that we're not moving as fast as we probably could, I think it's taken us a year or two to look at the data and start contemplating and then start having discussions based on data rather than, well, what do we think? Or what do we think is a good practice? We think it's working, but this gives us, especially with the kind of data that Charles and the curriculum office in academics looks at, gives us lots of layers to look at about success, so.
Should we move on to the next page? There's many pages of this and I apologize for the fine print, but I think we're trying to keep all the ophthalmologists in town employed.
This is data from the business department. And again, certification of excellence in financial reporting was the goal that the board established. Chris Welton in 1213, it was the percent approved. He received 100% and the target was 100%.
Go higher.
So we-
She was 110.
Food service, there, there was not a goal set by the Board of Education nor in transportation. However, I will point out that the transportation data was not available until we did the Harris poll. So what you have here is the data that came back from the Harris poll on parent satisfaction with transportation services. And so this was the percentage of parents giving a grade of A or B to our transportation department. Now, keep in mind, not all of our students utilize the transportation department, but this was from the parents whose, whose students do use transportation. 80% gave the district an A or B in our transportation services. We put together a benchmark target of 90%. The board has not officially adopted that, so that would be one of the things we want to do tonight, is that an appropriate benchmark target for 1617. Student satisfaction in addition with transportation services, and you see the breakdown of elementary and secondary, 79 and 85. Again, benchmark target of 90%. Is that appropriate or not? And then, again, do you want to set that as a new goal target if there's a problem?
Karen?
The only clarification is if we're using the Harris poll survey data, you know, for the 2012, 2013, and I understand that, you know, probably by 2013, we said that we'd do Harris again in, you know, approximately three years. And I know that we implement ad hoc surveys. Is that maybe the use? If you look at, you know, 12, 12, 12 to 12, you know, 12, 12, 12, 13 school year versus 13, 14 versus, you know, 15? I mean, I guess I'm just wondering, is-
That would be part of the, that would be part of the transportation department, their strategic plan. What are they going to do to improve that? They very well may want to say, we're going to do subsurveys, we're going to make some changes in how we deliver some service, we're going to track some, you know, we may track complaints, whatever they're going to do. I don't want to dictate to them exactly how they're going to go about that, but obviously we would share that with the transportation, our contractor and say, we expect, you know, an improvement of 90% to, you know, let's share with how we're going to do that.
It's just a, you know, little nuance, people aren't familiar with it, is if you're going to measure things and implement things and see how well you're doing and do check marks, if you will, along the way, when you've got, when you're using Harris survey as the, you know, data point or the start and you're not going to implement that again for several years, then you just have to think about it and I think it's important for all, everyone to know that.
Benchmark target, 90% appropriate?
Yeah.
And again, if you, if you remember the Harris poll, if you achieve a 90% on some of these, you're in the upper quartile of district nationwide on the satisfaction level in that particular area. Okay then, moving on to the next one, which is human resource department. You had highlighted two specific areas, employee evaluation timeline and teacher performance growth. Brad, we are still in the process of collecting that.
Teacher evaluation, sorry, is it teacher? The teacher evaluation growth piece, I believe for that particular piece, we ended up not leaving a 100% piece. There were three employees who went on some type of leave throughout the course of the school year and were not able to finish their summative evaluation, so they would be the three that were not finished, but all else were finished.
And then as far as percentage of staff satisfied with professional development, we're still working on, trying to establish how we're going to get that number. So we have, we don't have a current data mark, but we're working on that. And we're working with the teachers association, the teacher union to talk about some things we can do. Any questions on that one? Then moving on to the next one, it would be, I believe, technology. And again, the one highlighted that the board wanted us to emphasize was equitability of interactive technology access intra-level. Dave, and you may want to just briefly explain that so to remind the board what that was.
Sure, sometimes I confuse myself with this measure actually, even though I defined it. It's, it's really looking at the variance at each level, so K to five, within, we're looking at all the schools within the K to five band and then the three schools within the six to eight band. And we're trying to see how close are we in terms of investment per student, dollars per student? So we're, because it's difficult to count things when it comes to smart boards and clickers and iPads and iPods, you start to lose it in terms of how to compare. So what I thought would be more beneficial for the board would be to just look at how much money is actually being invested in each building on a per-student basis. And then that way, we know, it may be different things, but at least we know what the magnitude of the investment is per building. So in this case, the 104% means there's at least one building that is either above or below the average by, by that much. So there's a pretty big disparity. And it turns out, the, this year's numbers aren't on there, I did send those to Ellen Walsh a little while ago.
We have, we're looking at those.
Oh, you're looking at them? Okay, this slide doesn't show it, but it's now 54.1%. So we've, we've managed to bring that in closer to the target of 25%. And 25% is, I'll admit it's an arbitrary number. When, when we first looked at the data, we saw we were so far out that we just wanted to rein it in. And it could be a different number than 25 in the future, we want to make it even tighter than that, but it's difficult to project what a realistic number is, but we made some good progress in a, in a year or two, cut the gap or cut the disparity back by, by have, having the farthest out school, bringing it closer to the average. So I don't know if that helps explain it.
I guess, I'm not remembering why we found this particular metric important. I hate to ask such a silly question.
Well, I can't speak for the board, but I do know that there have been a lot of questions from parents and the board and PTAs about why do certain buildings have so much technology and other ones not? And what is the district, district doing about that? So I believe that that may have just drawn a lot of attention in terms of the focus, in terms of where's the district investing money and, and when donations come into play as well, how is the district trying to handle that and also be equitable? When we talk about equitability, when you look at the mission statement of the district or one of the belief statements that talks about equitability. And so there's a lot of questions about how do we help make, how do we help provide equitable access to technology for all the students? Even, even when there's these great donations going on and foundation grants and how do we, how do we still provide other areas that aren't necessarily benefiting from that? How do we still provide them as equitable an access as possible? And I just think that was one of the ones that came to the board's attention. But Karen, you want to?
I just wanted to follow up. It's intra-level, meaning within K5 and the different schools, a variation this much.
That is true.
So this number is an average of the variance in K5 and the variance in six to eight?
Correct. It's really, it's the largest variance. So yes, I looked at the variance within K5 and then I looked at the variance within six to eight and the largest number that was out there in the district was 104% from the, the variance. It's, that's why I said it's a little tricky to understand. There might be a better way to measure this. I'd be happy to entertain other ideas, but it's just one indicator and so.
But following up, you've told me many times that the technology doesn't determine. I mean, it's almost like buried in here is an assumption that the technology that is varying is effective.
Well, there's varying amounts of effectiveness as well, yes.
Because profession develops.
Yes, there's, there's a lot that goes into that. The good, I think the, like, for example, the, the smart board initiative that's underway right now for first, started with last year with the first grade classrooms and this summer, we're doing the second grade classrooms. That's driven by the curriculum department. The technology department's implementing it, but the, the drive is from the curriculum department. And following those deployments are structured professional development classes and professional growth classes provided by Kathy Baker. Some of the, some of the training is from externally brought in and Kathy provides some additional training. And then there's also some teachers, just, you know, advanced, advanced teachers that are helping other teachers out. So, so that, when the district is behind initiative, there is some structured training that follows that and to try to help build up the effectiveness of it. But it is a challenge to, there's the equitability of the distribution, but then to your point, there's the equitability of effectiveness, which is hard to achieve.
Karen?
I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, what, why we liked this is that it at least gives us some way of measuring, you know, the investment in technology and equitability across the district and at each grade, at the grade levels or chunks at least anyway. Ideally, what you do when you implement technology is you look at what's the effectiveness of that technology in that given industry or implementation or application? But no one's really kind of there yet. And I know that with the curriculum and instruction committee bringing in technology, there's a lot more discussion about that. That's really where we want to be, but at least this gets us closer to that and gives us, gives us a measurement of investment. So I think it makes sense, but you know, we're working toward utopia.
The new curriculum adoptions, a lot of that material is technology, to use the curriculum appropriately as we buy it. So if you're going to launch a new social studies curriculum, you have to have the tools in place at those K through five schools to, to utilize the curriculum.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to bend this thing towards effectiveness or, Dave, you seem to think, or you were saying to me that they're, they're different issues, but I'm wondering if there's a way to, because effectiveness is what we seek. We're not particularly interested in spending a lot of time for finding equity in things that really don't matter that much, so.
That's a different discussion than we had last year with the board. So, you know, it was, we had a long discussion on this equity issue, so.
Right.
I don't, you know, the ultimate test of our effectiveness, no matter what the tool is for teaching and learning, is active, the academic achievement and what kids do, career-ready, college-ready, is what this comes down to. So are we effective when we do strategic planning, when we put in tools for curriculum, when we put in new curriculum adoption? How effective is whatever tool? If it's a textbook, if it's a slide rule, whatever it is, is it being effective in having kids achieve the appropriate learning at the appropriate rate? That's the ultimate test of effectiveness. And, and you have to be careful that, you know, and Dave, we've had this discussion, that technology doesn't drive teaching and learning. It's a tool, but it's still teaching and learning that's deciding what's effective. And if technology can help us, great, but it's not a given that we get the latest widget and, and it's going to improve achievement because we've all seen that, you know, that is not an effective strategy to, you know, put something in kids' hands and think on its own it's going to achieve.
The effectiveness is basically buried in page one, as opposed to buried into this page.
Yeah. And especially, especially when you look at things like online learning, you know, there's a, a lot of research about online learning and I think it's a good avenue for students to learn on occasion. But online learning is very challenging for some students and to say, we're going to online learning and it's the end-all and be-all for education, the research is showing that's not really true. And if you've ever taken an online class, you better be pretty disciplined on your own to be able to accomplish that. And that's a challenge for a lot of students. Why don't we move on to the next one? I believe it's communication. The board highlighted two areas and I'd like to talk, we can talk about the two areas and Malia can talk about those in a minute. I do want to point out that underneath that, and this is not Malia's, so the, the student overall satisfaction on elementary, middle school, parent overall satisfaction, employee satisfaction is not Malia's department. It's all of ours. So just, Malia got nervous when I put this in. I just want to make that disclaimer that this is not hers. But we put this in since we've had the Harris poll. So those are the updates on the overall unit of measure and that's very similar to what we use it in transportation for an overall satisfaction rating. So if you look, student overall satisfaction at the elementary- So if you look, student overall satisfaction at the elementary level, percentage of students giving us an A or B was 89%. I set the target at 90, as we did with the other ones. So again, the board will have to formally establish those if you're comfortable with those. Looking at the data, we are very close to the 90th percentile for parent satisfaction, student satisfaction at elementary and secondary. We are not close in the area of our employees, teachers and staff. So I would suggest to the board that you may want to consider that as a new goal to be highlighted for this coming year, that you definitely want to target employee satisfaction for teachers, employee satisfaction for staff, as a new target for goal-setting for this year. So because there is quite a gap between parent and student satisfaction and employee satisfaction. Again, 90% is what I set. It's up to the board if that's appropriate. Chris, go ahead.
You know, Dave, I think that's a great point. I mean, I think that when we talk about employees, you know, we talk about from a principal's standpoint, we want to attract, retain and develop the best folks in the country, you know, hopefully at our district. And you start by measuring satisfaction. There's obviously other elements to that. But I think if we as a board say that we want great people, I think we need to start making sure that it's a priority to measure something that goes with that. So I'm all for it.
And just the other question, 90%? Is the board comfortable with that as a benchmark target for all those areas, overall satisfaction?
It's a big jump.
Well, it is a big jump.
Is that the Harris National Norms? Did you say that?
Yeah, if you remember.
Yeah.
If you remember right, if you score in the 90% on that as an overall indicator, it puts you in that very top quartile of districts across the country. So that's where the 90% came from. The data, Karen. Well. Again, you're not, you know, we're probably going to do some sub-surveys on this, a strategy of working with staff, all of that. You won't have the same benchmark data for two or three years, but that's not a bad timeline because you're going to need time to put in strategies to address that. You don't want to go out and do a survey after the first year and say, oh, we didn't make any progress. Well, you haven't done enough significant changes to make that meaningful and to say, is the strategies that we put in place working or not? So. Margaret?
Yep, there was a question on the 90 percentile. I guess I would look at it and say, our other categories are at 90% at a target. While that is certainly a high, it's a hurdle, it's a significant difference, why wouldn't we want to shoot for that same level is a question.
In my opinion, there's no reason that we need to lower the bar.
No argument.
So with that?
With that, we will highlight employee overall satisfaction and staff satisfaction, and we'll communicate to administrative team and staff, that's one of the new goals from the district this year. With that, I'll turn the other two over to Malia, and she can explain the other two that are highlighted.
Well, we just, we're trying to measure both internal and external communication satisfaction. And I did provide you with a breakdown of more data, data that had drilled down into this that was part of the Harris Poll because we had expanded on the Harris Poll and added several extra questions regarding communications. So that's probably more updated and more effective data than what we have here. But because it shows the current data is not available, but we do actually have some available. So if you want to, if you need to get another look at that, I can certainly send that, resend that to you. I don't have it with me right this minute.
I would suggest, why don't we plug that in, Malia, and then we can send that to them so they can see that current data.
Yeah, sure.
Moving on then to the, I believe, the last one is financial planning. There are two highlights here, operating fund balance and ISB financial profile score. On both those, and we've had a lot of discussion on this, the ratio of fund balance to annual operating funds, the benchmark is 25 to 30%. The 10, 11 school year, we were at 29. Within that range, this 11, 12, we're at 33. And then ISB financial profile score, and Chris, I don't know if you want to explain that to the board.
There's five different criteria that make up the Illinois State Board of Education Financial Profile Score. And it is based on the annual financial report or the audited, the audited financial report at the end of each year. And we have received the, we've been the last few years consistently in the recognition category, which is the target. And we should maintain that rating with the 2012, 13 audit that will be coming up November, December, we should get that, but we will maintain the recognition status.
In the ratio of operating fund balance to annual operating expenditures, that ratio, we conclude a few months ago that 25% was too low and in fact changed our policy. Should we update that slide to reflect our new policy? Thank you. Chris?
And one other point, I think the number that we reported on our monthly has the refund of the hospital, the $3 million in that fund balance. So, you know, while that number's above the range, I think you have to adjust it for that. And I think we're talking about doing that going forward with the close of this coming, you know, the 13 fiscal year that just happened. So we're going to reserve that, and we're going to take that out. So I think looking at where that number is above the range may be slightly misleading. I think it's still above the range, but not as much as that number shows.
Thanks for, we will update all of this and get this back to the board. Again, we will probably bring the student academic achievement data back to, at the October workshop meeting and have another discussion on our key DPIs. And I will use this, again, my administrative team is on retreat next week for three days here in this room, and we will be talking about the targets and the goals for the board at that time in the district.
Next on our agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any changes in the June 11th, June 13th, June 19th, June 25th, or June 26th meeting minutes?
Okay. Shannon?
This is minor. It was the June 11th meeting when the city came and talked about their pictures. And it's on page five, it talks about, Mr. Grabowski indicated that they have a copy of the intergovernmental agreement. That's not about from, between us and them. It was some, maybe from some other governmental entity? I didn't know.
I believe that. Didn't that refer to the Downers Grove Park District?
Okay, so I just didn't want that to be misconstrued that he has a copy between us and them. So maybe we want to add for Downers Grove? Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other changes to all those minutes? Are we still looking, or we have no changes? Okay, so then the meeting minutes will stand with the one correction pointed out by Mrs. Ebner. Next on our agenda is board committee reports. First is the board improvement committee. Who wants to take that on?
You.
No, really, Mrs. Ebner, you can forge ahead here.
Okay, we met on July 1st, and we're continuing on with our community presentation. We talked about the purpose of that presentation. I'm going to pull up. The meeting minutes have been posted. For some reason, they're not on board docs, but they are, they have been posted. Ellen Walsh sent them out. I don't know why they're not on board docs here. So the committee talked about the purpose of this presentation, and our discussion was this would be part of a series of presentations to the community, trying to engage the community and get two-way conversation going. But I guess we need to start this kind of two-way conversation with our community with this presentation. It's kind of like the, as I said, the first in a series, talking about our financial information, revenues, expenditures, property taxes, financial constraints, sort of, you know, to create a shared understanding, a little bit of education of what, some of the things that we're up against financially. And then from there, move on and bring it to PTAs and whatever community groups that we deem appropriate. And then from there, we could start setting the stage for any changes that have to come along in the district just years from now. This is just background information for the community to know. And then if we want to do some, you know, innovative educational models that Mr. Purnow has talked about, then the community would have more understanding for some of those new ideas. So where are we at with the presentation? We are, it's still in draft form. We, you were going to work with Malia and try to get a copy available. Would it be for August, the August board meeting? I wasn't sure. I wrote in the minutes, August or September.
I think that can probably be done by August.
Okay.
And let's move on to the finance and operations committee. Mr. Bloom?
I had to dig this out. It's been a while since we've gotten together. So at the last finance committee meeting topics, May monthly financial report, and Chris, I think, you know, we've got June now, so I don't get overly into May. I think unplanned on budget is the answer there. I think that from a preliminary revenue standpoint, that property taxes were coming in a little bit lower on a percent collected basis than they did last year, or they have historically from an average, from a historical average perspective. And I don't know, Chris, if you have an update, chime in. But we're monitoring that and seeing whether we pick that up in the second payment or whether this is coming in over time. And if this is a trend, whether we need to adjust models to account for that. The Elmhurst Memorial Hospital Reserve, we talked about, our budget last year had $3 million in it to be paid to Elmhurst Memorial as a refund. It didn't happen in fiscal '13, so that amount is going to be reserved and taken out of the fund balance, you know, as we reported. And let's see, the state, the state had actually made a fifth payment. So we had budgeted four payments, and they had made a fifth payment in the fiscal year just ended, which was about $1 million. And so they caught up a little bit, but Chris, 6:30 was the next payment date, or did they, they were going to?
It came in July, July 1st.
So they did come in. So they're still, they still caught up one payment now. Okay, so we're monitoring that. I know, I think there have been a number of news articles about how there was a positive variance for the state in April taxes, and they were using that to clean up some bills, but that later this year it might flip back. So again, we're looking at our budget from that standpoint. And then I think the last piece was just budgeting for the legal settlement, I think where that goes. We will be looking at June and fiscal year-end in the coming months and have a more detailed discussion about where we ended up as that comes in. Budget timeline, this was an exercise that we had done to kind of memorialize the process of crafting that budget around functions, around, you know, long-term planning, around staffing decisions that we have to make, around capital expenditures that we have to make. I think we've made some great progress, and I think, Chris, we're going to post that and discuss it at the board table here in the near future. So we will have a document, and hopefully it's something that we can pass along to future boards to manage expectations around what's needed when and when decisions need to be made so that there's no fire drills. Third, procurement policies and procedures. We took a look at how we buy things. I think the general goal is to go beyond what's legally required. The state has a set of guidelines, and I think our goal is to be good fiduciaries of the taxpayers' dollars. And with that in mind, took a look at how we do things. Couple of things came out of that. One is potentially an opportunity when we lease items to enter into a, kind of like we do with a bond deal, a parameters resolution that basically says, you know, these are the entities that are approved to lease from and take the lowest cost at the time that we bid it out. And that's something that David Smith is looking into, and we will report back to the board depending on where that goes. And Dave's also looking at some other items on the technology side. One item that we did identify was a kind of a confusing aspect of board policy that I think the policy committee is taking, is or has taken on. And I can, you want to talk about that in your report, or? Okay. The next item was facility usage agreement, and that's on the agenda, the consent agenda tonight. One of the things just pointed out there was, we recommended a going with a CPI increase. Our costs seem to be tied to CPI, and we need to make sure that, you know, the spirit of that usage agreement is that we pass along our costs and nothing more. And so as our costs go up, a modest 3% will be added to the facility usage agreement for next year. Let's see what else. Skip four, cast five, I guess I've read these. On the residency side, we are taking a look at how we can, how we make sure that we're doing the right things on the residency side, I think, making sure that we're actually abiding by the policies that we have in place and maybe ways that we can tweak those policies to make sure that we're educating District 205 students. And then the status update side, safety vestibules. One of the things that was on the agenda is, I think the district has identified five schools to install walls and doors to create safety vestibules to enhance security. So I think, I think, Dave, you talked to the principals and the PTAs potentially, and just the opportunity to tell the public that when you walk into school in August, don't be surprised within, was it Jackson, Madison, Churchville, Lincoln and Edison? Is there anything to add to that, or?
No, just that we physically reconfigured those buildings because it was cost-effective to put in vestibules, and that's credit to Chris and his staff and the safety committee to evaluate that and say, we can do this on a pretty reasonable cost basis. And I think it gives us some added security in those buildings that lent itself to that kind of physical configuration. The other thing we're doing is we're looking at video surveillance in those buildings that we could not physically alter, but then updating some video surveillance in those schools so that they also had added security. So we're still in the process of doing that. But I think in those five schools, it'll be very noticeable that there's a different entryway. The outer doors will be accessed, but the inner doors in the school will be locked until they get approval through the, each office to get into the building. So it's much added security. Chris, I don't know if there's anything else.
Those renovations were done in-house with our maintenance staff.
I miss my time on the finance committee because the way you change the financial reports, I thought were very meaningful. There was some very, some really good graphic portrayals. Your items that change, I thought was really helpful. And I kind of miss it because as I scan through our agenda here, we get the really interesting legal fiction of approving expenditures and things like that. And now, it's as easy as just flipping over to the finance So, we're still in the process of doing that. But I think in those five schools, it'll be very noticeable that there's a different entryway. The outer doors will be accessed, but the inner doors in the school will be locked until they get approval through the, each office to get into the building. So, it's much added security. Chris, I don't know if there's anything else.
Those renovations were done in-house with our maintenance staff.
I missed my time on the Finance Committee because the way you changed the financial reports, I thought were very meaningful. There was some very, some really good graphic portrayals. Your items that change, I thought was really helpful, and I kind of miss it because as I scan through our agenda here, we get the really interesting legal fiction of approving expenditures and, and things like that. And now, it's as easy as just flipping over to the Finance Committee agenda to get the full package of that. That's true. But I also think it would be helpful for, you know, most people just review our agenda here, but I'm wondering if, if, you know, you'd have a problem with posting some of those really helpful things, especially the ones that relate to fund balance and really show how the budget is directing and where we stand in relation to the budget at each point. I'm wondering if, if it would be okay to post some of these things on this agenda as well, since a number of the things that we have in our consent agenda are just there for information anyway. Any thoughts about that?
Sure.
I think it would really help because I think people don't go through all our committee agendas. They go through this agenda, and that would really help, give a real snapshot of where we start, certainly to, you know, less sophisticated financial folks, some of the things that you've done to communicate the situation has, has been really helpful.
All right.
Then we turn to me.
So, now I'm going to turn right to you for a policy. Oh, I'm sorry, Emily.
I was going to ask about the facility usage agreement. Is that something that came from the Finance Committee, from Chris? Who did that? Both of you, all together? I know you're on the committee, but-
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Chris, Chris talks to the committee about recommendations to the board. I think then Chris drafts it. We had, you know, we did a rework last year, so this year it was just updating, and so-
That's what I was asking. So, this is similar to what was in place already? It's just there were some updates?
We, we added, we increased the fees by CPI.
Right.
And then, there was a piece that was added around lifeguards at the pool, that we had surveyed a number of other districts that had allowed other groups using the pool to use their own lifeguards, which could be a cost savings, particularly when coaches and, or trained coaches or certified coaches are able to do that. So, that was one other change. I don't think we changed much of anything else.
A minor tweak of cancellation.
Yeah.
Okay, so the groups are familiar with this, and it's very similar to what was in place.
Very similar.
Can I ask a question about, what is with the Immaculate Conception use of Hawthorne? I just, I'm not familiar with that, the gym at Hawthorne?
Right. Immaculate Conception, there was an agreement back when the new gym was renovated, that there was a grant from the state related to soundproofing the new gym. And based on that, they, Immaculate Conception has priority for the new gym after the Park Districts, and due to our intergovernmental agreement, and they do not pay for the use of that gym.
Okay. The other question I had was, I saw that scout, scouting groups were part of section, I mean, they were in the same group as District 205 Foundation, Boosters. I didn't understand why scouts would have been in that group instead of the one below it. Just logically seemed to me like, sorry, talking about group, the priority. I mean, I'm sure there's reasoning behind it, I just don't understand what it is. Group C, it includes scouting groups, whereas all the other people in Group C seem to be school-related groups.
The scouting is school-related, it's all school-based, so if like, there's a, you know, a Jackson School scouting group, they want to be at the school, you know, so it is school-based.
But the, I mean, Boy Scouts of America, I mean, that's separate from the group, from the school district.
But I guess the people within the group are from a certain school.
Yeah, but you could say that about like, AYSL. A lot of times those teams are made up from, all kids from the same school. Okay, I'm sorry, maybe not, there are a lot of clubs that try to group kids from the same school together. I just don't think that's, the scouts, I mean, they're separate from our school district, right? They just seem like they would have been Group D.
They are, but consistently, they're led by a parent within the school, and, and-
Are made up of kids from the school.
Yeah, as Shannon pointed out, they're all made up from kids of, from the school.
Okay.
If there's one other thing I can point out about raising the cost by CPI, a little historical perspective, School Board had, had not raised the facility usage fees from the early 1980s until 2010. And then they were raised a lot. And it caused all sorts of problems for budgeting for our users. You know, problems we're still working out to this day, three years later. But I think it's smart to raise them by CPI a little bit every year to keep up with our costs, as Mr. Bloom pointed out. But also, the fact that we're, we're doing them, we're raising that fee by CPI two years previous allows every group plenty of notice for their budgets, for the fees they charge their users. I, I think that's frankly a smart way to do it, is just lag actual CPI by two years so that every group can plan.
And, sorry, one more question. When it says that we don't charge the Park District for use, does that include both, like rec station that takes place in the schools, and also maybe like their biddy sports that takes place in our gyms?
It does.
Is that right? So, both of those are free of, free of charge?
Free of charge.
Margaret?
I was wondering if you could give, I mean, that sounds, if you could give some history on, on that, because both Emily and I are obviously new to the board, and we don't understand some agreements that might have been made, or from any historical perspective on why, as example, Boy Scouts is included in one group, and the Park District is included in that group. So, is there any historical perspective that you can provide?
Well, I'm sorry, my microphone doesn't work, man. Try and talk loud. The intergovernmental agreement with the Park District was agreed to in 2001. It's a 20-year contract. And that allows, and I think the concept behind it is that the school district uses Park District facilities. A lot of times, this is for York's sports teams, the cross-country, and they're using Barron's Park. So, so the concept is that we use, we use their, their facilities and they use our facilities. And, and that's, that's the agreement, and that's why they are Group B, and there are no fees related to them. The scouts from the time I came in and looking at historical records, they have been in this Group C with the Boosters, the Foundation. I know the principals feel strongly like the, the scouts are part of the school. They are separate, a separate organization, but there is a feeling that, like the scouting program is part of these individual elementary schools. I, that's just my perspective from talking to them, and it's always been the case that they're in this group above with the, the PTAs and the Boosters, and, and then the other Elmhurst-based not-for-profit organizations are the group below. That's the only historic, historical perspective I can give on that.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Emily?
I said I was done, but sorry, one more question. So, you talked about the agreement with the Park District, 20 years, starting 2001. What about the, with Immaculate Conception? How long is that agreement?
There's, I've never seen an actual agreement.
All right. The next would then be the Policy Committee. Mr. McDonough.
We held a very compact, very efficient meeting last evening. Handled some very significant matters. No, I'm just kidding. The first thing that was on our agenda was the security surveillance video policy. We didn't have one, and Dave Smith had surveyed different schools, came up with something that took some of the best of that and presented it. It was approved. I don't think we amended it, did we?
A few minor.
A few minor textual things. You should be seeing the recommendation by the committee on the next agenda. Is that right, Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
For the first reading.
For the first reading. Procurement, we tackled that very obtuse term, non-customary expenses that, that puzzled the Finance Committee, also puzzled the Policy Committee last night. And we were not sure what it was, but we did start taking apart some of the ideas regarding when, in addition to the requirements of the school code, we would like to see the administration bring contracts for approval. And the administration is going to take some of those ideas and draft up a proposed policy for our next meeting. We also considered residency with a couple of fact situations before us, requests for interpretation of the residency policy. It seemed, it was the consensus of the Policy Committee that the policy should remain as it is without amendment. We're open to hearing different points of view, but the members present felt that there was not a need to amend it, given the specific fact situations in these two samples of requests for relief. We also discussed the proposed stadium use policy. The history behind that was, was the agreement with the community that the, what was the name of that committee?
York, right?
York.
Wycaq.
Wycaq. York Community Advisory Council had come up with an agreement under which, under, for conditions under which the stadium would operate. And this board showed unanimous support for adhering to that, and the question became, what was the best way to memorialize that? And some members felt that doing policy would not make sense because it was a little unwieldy and wouldn't allow the flexibility needed when, if the two sides decided to make a change. So, we discussed different alternatives to a policy, including a resolution, a statement of intent of the board that would say, the board intends to follow the agreement as it was reached with the community. And I believe we're going to have a draft of that for our next meeting, and hopefully be able to present something to the full board with a recommendation, meeting following that. Then we went through a number of more pedestrian press updates to our policy manual, identity protection requiring storing and destroying identity data, safety provisions governing the way our contractors operate, who come in contact with children, adding tobacco prohibition to a policy provision, basically restatement of tobacco prohibition that's in another provision. A provision relating the student teachers and the qualifications of the student, of the teachers who will, what's the proper word, not mentor, supervise the student teachers. A recommendation not to implement a bring-your-own-technology provision as administration is still looking at the parameters of what that would look like here at York, or here at, in District 205, rather. We look, the field trips provision approved, and the community use of schools, some textual changes that followed along with the adoption of the fee and agreements on an annual basis. I think that's it. As I said, compact and efficient.
We, we may have to switch chairs, as I said. Show me how it's done. Any questions for Mr. McDonough?
We didn't do that, is how we got it done. I'm just kidding.
All right, that leaves us with the Performance Management Committee.
All right. We, we met, boy, I forgot the date, sorry. Performance Management Committee met on June 20th. Yeah, it seems like a long time ago. Chris, I agree with, with our June meetings. And really what we did is, we had, for the new board members, we really looked at, over the last two years that we've had this committee in play, all the committees, but this, this committee in particular, and revisited them all so that we could recap, you know, because we don't meet that often in this committee, as well as to bring the new board members on board. And really what we did was, we took all of those individual items and, and talked about them around focus areas or themes. So, that's how I'm going to provide the update, and that's how we'll move forward with the Performance Management Committee. Okay? So, we still have the same items that we talk about, but it's more really focusing at the board level, because on some of the things that we talk about, in performance management, there's board-level things, and then there's the, you know, district management and operations pieces of it, and we want to make sure we stay at the board level. So, there are three key themes. One is the superintendent goals and evaluation. Two is the DPI's goals and strategic planning, and three is really about being a good employer, you know, to our employees, meaning attracting, retaining, and developing our people. So, the first one, superintendent goals and evaluation, really what we talked about in a nutshell is, we all, we all, we know, as we as a board have talked about it, as well as in the committee, we like the very structured superintendent evaluation and goal process that was put together a couple of years ago, and so we'll keep moving that forward and tweaking it. The key item is, is that as we look at the goals, we're going to have alignment, and we're going to make sure that we look at alignment from, you know, board, superintendent, you know, district, throughout the organization, at the building levels, department levels. So, that's a key thing, you know, that you need to be aware of. Then we move, of course, it's logical, just to get into the DPI's goals and strategic planning. And it's two, and there's two pieces to it, right? There's one that, at a board level, the Performance Management Committee will, will maintain, looking at the, some of the, some of the categories in the DPIs, but of course, the overall. And we talked about it a little bit earlier and tonight, that you can't just look at one of the DPIs. Sometimes you have to look at many of them to see the big picture, and that will still remain the role with performance management. And we'll be looking at that alignment. Understand that here, a survey will fall into this, this category or theme, focus area, DPI's goals and strategic planning. So, it really goes in, it, there's a piece where some of these DPIs, as they're categorized, and has, as we've worked the last two years on the DPIs, is some of them get worked in more detail at the various committee levels, and that work will continue. So, for example, what we're, what we're, what we've done in the past and will continue, like curriculum instruction, still will look at the detailed work of reviewing the DPIs, you know, are they valid? We just put them in, in one year, you know, kind of the discussion that we're having here, as well as looking at the data. And then, the next phase is the strategic plans that the district will be putting together. That'll come to the committees individually, like we put the DPIs together, and then, once again, overall, the Performance Management Committee will look at all the strategic plans overall. So, Finance and Operations would still own the operations and organizational effectiveness, the financial planning and technology, performance management, once again, the overall DPIs, as well as operations and organizational effectiveness from an HR standpoint, and communications and community relations. So, next steps will be, you know, looking at the strategic plans as it relates to those DPIs and kind of looking at it in concert. So, just kind of FYI, that's what will be coming to those committees as we move forward. Okay. Then we talked about attracting, retaining, and developing our people, and really looking at the interrelationship between three key items, professional development, total compensation, and evaluation as it relates to, not the details of evaluations, but from the intent of the legislation around PIRA and SB 7. And making sure that, you know, we've got that, that that is working to our benefit, improving our employees' satisfaction and performance, et cetera. But we really looked at it from the standpoint and began the discussion, so this is how we're going to look at these pieces, is what are our principles? What are our values? And what's the framework around it? So that's kind of it in a nutshell. We wanted to kind of get high-level, you know, look at it overall, you know, look at the purpose, look at the focus, are we on target? Do we all, you know, agree? And then that's how we're going to chunk up our work for the, for the remainder of the year. Does that make sense?
Any questions? Okay. Let me move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Let me just fly through the items really quick, and then I'll ask if any, if anybody wants any of them removed. Our standard personnel, monthly personnel report, standard monthly financial reports, the approval of the facility usage fees that we've discussed tonight, approval of a bid for the grouting of the York High School Aquatic Center for approximately $47,000, approval of a change order and the renovation of the York Aquatic Center, an additional $33,000 for additional materials for the roof, approval of change order number three for the York Aquatic Center project, there were undetected failures of structural steel in the soffit. Additional steel cost about $26,000. And approval of two donations, which I want to say thank you very much for, a family, they, I'm sorry, the Lincoln PTA is donating to Lincoln School, a smart board, a projector and a floor stand for those. And then a family at Edison is donating seven wireless access points. So thank you very much. That is the superintendent's consent agenda. Any items to be removed from that? Okay. Hearing none, since we're spending money, it requires a roll call vote. But before that, I need a motion. Details. It's, I'm entering, I'm entering the 18th hour of my workday today, okay? So, a motion, anyone? Thank you, Mr. McDonough.
I move that we approve the superintendent's agenda, consent agenda, as shown on our agenda.
Second? Moved by Mr. McDonough, seconded by Mrs. Bastido, to approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through H. Now, Mrs. Walsh, your turn.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Aye.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That is seven yeses, I guess, including the aye. No nos, no nos, and that motion passes. And then we have an action item out of the superintendent's consent agenda as well, if someone wants to make that motion. Mr. McDonough?
I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's or his designees' execution of the master lease purchase agreement with J.P. Morgan Chase Bank N.A. dated July 19, 2013. Approve the superintendent's or his designees' execution of lease schedule number 1000137586 dated July 19, 2013, and other related documents with J.P. Morgan Chase Bank N.A. for finance payments totaling $1,464,704.64 regarding certain computer network equipment and printer copier equipment for school district use. And approve the resolution and the declaration of official intent for lease schedule number 1000137586 submitted by J.P. Morgan Chase Bank N.A.
Do I have a second, or anyone that would like to repeat that?
I second.
Oh. Move by Mr. McDonough for the approval of the J.P. Morgan Chase Bank Master Lease Purchase Agreement, seconded by Dr. Harrell. Mrs. Walsh?
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Dr. Harrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven yeses, or the equivalent thereof. No, no nos, that motion passes. Then, upcoming meetings, Tuesday, July 23rd, finance and operations. We still going to hold that meeting? We have a few board members, or a few committee members that cannot attend. So we do not have a quorum, so that meeting will not be held. Wednesday, August 7th, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting. That still on, Mrs. Ebner? And it is. That will be held in these rooms. And then Tuesday, August 13th, is our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting for the month of August at 7:30 PM in this same room. Now, we have a couple of more things left on the agenda. Employment of employee, first of all, we have two motions. Someone want to read the motion for the salary recommendations? Mr. McDonough?
I move that the Board of Education approve the administrative, non-union, non-administrative salaries as recommended by the administration.
Do I hear a second for that motion? Thank you. Moved by Mr. McDonough, seconded by Mrs. Ebner. We need a roll call vote on that as well. Mrs. Walsh?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven yeses, no nos, that motion carries. Second, coming out of closed section, the closed session, thank you. Reduction, a motion regarding the reduction in force of hallway monitors. Mrs. Bastido?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing reduction in force of educational support personnel. As recommended by the administration.
Do I hear a second for that motion? Let's not all jump in at once now.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Bastido, seconded by Mrs. Ebner, a motion on the floor for reduction in force of hallway monitors. I think we just need a voice vote there. So all in favor, say yes? Yes?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? That motion carries.
I'm sorry, I need to interject.
Please, please do.
But I have been informed that actually it is a roll call vote that is necessary in order to do the reduction in force.
Mr.
Therefore, I'm going to ask that you redo the vote and do it in a roll call fashion.
Mr. Hillman, I do appreciate that, before we violate any rules. So let me, let me take that, like, can we redo the, the motion and the second, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing reduction in force of educational support personnel.
Moved by Mrs. Bastido, seconded by Mrs. Ebner, for a reduction in force, motion on the floor for the reduction in force of hallway monitors. So Mrs. Walsh, can you please take a roll?
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. As an explanation, which I probably should have done beforehand, the high school would like to restructure the supervision of their hallways and campus grounds. The job description of hallway monitors is too limiting for their current needs, and they would like to redeploy some of our employees and, in another job description, which allows them more flexibility to be more effective in the monitoring of our high school campus. So next is board communications. Anybody have any reports from? Okay. Hearing none. And reaching the last item on our agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.